Hi and welcome. We're so excited that you chose to join us today. And we hope that this message will inspire you to live the life that God designed you to live. For this message, or others like it, you can go to our website, or you can find us on our YouTube channel. Now sit back, relax, enjoy this message. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah.
Jesus. Be lifted high. Be lifted high, God. Oh, we come with thanksgiving tonight and praise. With your worthy one you are.
You are worthy.
You are worthy.
We worship.
Have your way in our hearts. We come with grace tonight, God. Oh, we love you, Jesus.
You are glorious, God.
For we pray to you, Father. We welcome you. God of creation. There at the start before the beginning of time. With no point of reference. I spoke to the dark and fleshed out the wonder of light. And as you see. A hundred billion galaxies are born. In the vapor of your breath the planets form. If the souls are made to worship so will I. I can see your heart in everything you do. Every burning star symbolize your grace. If creation sings your praises so will I. Part of your promise. You don't speak in vain, no syllable empty your voice. But once you have spoken. All nature and signs follow the sound of your voice. And as you see. A hundred billion creatures pass your breath. Oh, and growing in pursuit of what you said. If it all reveals your nature so will I. I can see your heart in everything you say. If you paint to the sky a canvas of your grace. If creation still obeys you so will I. Oh, Jesus. So will I. So will I. We worship you, you're worthy. You're worthy, God, amen. Oh, sing with me, the souls. If the souls are made to worship so will I. If the mountains bow in reverence so will I. If the oceans roar your grace so will I. But if everything exists to lift you high so will I. If the wind blows away you send it so will I. If the rocks dry up inside it so will I. Cause you're worthy, God. If the soul of all our praise is still upon shine. They will sing again a hundred billion times. And whoa. So. And whoa. You're worthy, God. Yes. You're worthy, Jesus. Come on tonight, let's lift our hands. Lift your voice tonight. He is worthy. You are worthy. You are worthy, Jesus. You have my heart. And God of salvation. You chased down my heart through all of my failure and pride. On a hill you created. A light of the world, abandoning darkness to die. Thank you, God. And as you see. A hundred billion failures disappear. Well, you lost your life so I could find it here. If you left the grave behind you so will I. I can see your heart in everything you've done. If you part yourself in a work of art called art. If you gladly chose to surrender so will I. I can see your heart in billions of different ways. If you precious one, a child you died to save. If you gave your life to love and so will I. Like you would again a hundred billion times. But what measure could amount to your desire? You're the one who never leaves the one behind. Thank you, thank you, God. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, God. Oh, sweet Father. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Your silence fear. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Sing that again. And Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Oh, put his name on your lips tonight. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Sing peace. In peace. Bring it all to peace. The storm surrounding me, let it break. At your name. And still call the season still. The rage in me is still everywhere. At your name. And Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Your silence fear. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Oh, sing, breathe. And bloom. Call these bones to live. And call these lungs to sing. Once again. And I will praise. And bloom. Call these bones to live. Call these lungs to sing. Once again. Oh. I will praise. And Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Your silence fear. Oh, Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. And your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. Your name cannot be overcome. Your name is a light forever lifting high. Your name cannot be overcome. Come on, Jesus. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Your silence fear. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Oh, sing your name. Your name is a light that the shadows can't deny. Come on. Your name. Your name is a light forever lifting high. Your name cannot be overcome. Oh, let you know, Jesus. Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus. Your silence fear. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Oh. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Your silence fear. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Oh, those are the people. And Jesus, Jesus. Come on, church. You make the darkness tremble. Jesus, Jesus. Thank you, God. Jesus, Jesus. You make the darkness tremble. Oh, we declare your silence fear. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. Thank you, God. No sweetness. There's power in your name. There's power in your name. Oh, you are a light. Thank you, God.
Praise God. Everyone slip up your hand to the Lord tonight. I just feel electricity in this room. Thank you, Jesus. Praise God. God, we just worship you, we thank you. Thank you, Jesus. God, we've come tonight expecting to hear from you, God. We've come expecting to be plugged into you, God. Thank you, Jesus. Just take a moment. Kids, adults, everybody. Just close your eyes and just reach up to heaven tonight. Just put both hands in the air. I wonder if you've ever seen those trains that run with electricity? Where they have those things that reach up to the electrical lines? I just picture that was happening tonight. And you know, have you ever smelt an electrical spark? I think if you were able to smell in the atmosphere, in the spiritual realm, that you'd smell an electrical spark in here tonight. That's charged by your hunger, by your thirst for the things of God, for more of Him. So tonight, I want you to engage closely with the Spirit of God. Just plug right in, plug right in. The power's there. Plug into Him tonight as you get ready to receive from Him. Hallelujah. Go ahead and greet your person next to you. It's wonderful to have all of you with us tonight. Our guest speaker is Seth Doll, who comes from California. He lives just east of Los Angeles. Not long ago, he was the children's pastor for Bill Johnson's church, Bethel, in Redding, California. Many people here are familiar with Bethel Church. And so we're so blessed to have Seth come and join us for these four meetings. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., tomorrow night at 6:30, and then again Sunday morning at 10:00 a.m. And just encourage you, come to all these meetings you can. They're all open to the public. Bring more kids. If you have neighbors, friends, family, bring them all. No matter where they're from. Come on, bring them in and fill the house. And we'll have a great time. Amen. So just want to welcome Seth Doll tonight. Thank you so much for coming.
Hey, guys. How are you all doing? Good? I'm gonna just slide this over a little bit. I'm gonna show you, because I can see you guys and your families. I want to show you a little bit about my family. Cause I know you don't know who I am. And Pastor Ryan told you a little bit, but you don't really know. So my name is Seth. I've been working with kids for 15 years in New York City and in California, and now all over the world. So I get to go to all these fun places and meet kids all over. My favorite place to go is Switzerland. They have the best chocolate ever on the whole planet. So when kids would come visit me from Switzerland, they would bring me all this chocolate. They would say, "Here, Pastor Seth, here's chocolate from Sw-" If you ever go to Switzerland, go get the chocolate. Do you, wait, do you guys like chocolate here? You do? Minnesota likes chocolate? Just making sure I wasn't 100% certain. The best chocolate's really Switzerland. I'm gonna show you a little bit about my family, then I'm gonna show you some fun stuff that I brought. So Sam, can you put some of those pictures up? That is my whole family. Well, not my whole family. That's all my human family. Do you guys have members of your family that are not human? Like cats and dogs and stuff? Yeah? You do? I'm gonna show you most of mine. I don't think I have all of them, but I'm gonna show you most of them. So this is me right there. This is my wife Lauren. This is my daughter Brooklyn, like the city. She's eight years old. Are any of you eight? No. Zero eight-year-olds. This is my son August. Oh, you're eight, okay. You guys would be buddies. August is five. Actually, he's about to turn six, so he's really pumped. He's gonna turn six next month. And then that is baby Arrow. Arrow Hawk is his name. Kind of an intense name, I know. But he's gonna be really awesome. There we are together, nice and friendly and smiling, not being crazy. You guys like to be crazy sometimes? Or are you always this quiet? Are you always this calm and this quiet? Or do you like to get a little rambunctious? Rambu- can you say that word, rambunctious? Can you say it again, like you're actually listening to me? Rambunctious! All right, you're getting closer, you're almost there, but you're really quiet. A little too quiet for me. I'm from California. I know you have a lot of corn and it probably makes it quiet. But I need you a little bit louder. You have permission to be a little bit loud. Say. Rambunctious! Okay, okay, all right, that's good. I thought we had kids here. I want to make sure you guys were still kids and not a bunch of grownups. So there we are, we're all happy and fun. Can you go to another one of those pictures, Sam? Oh, there is our horse. How many of you have seen the movie Frozen? Do you like that movie? Okay, every horse. You kind of like it? Cause you're too old, I see, you're too old. So Frozen. Every horse in the movie Frozen is that kind of horse. It's called a Norwegian fjord. Just like in the movie, the fjords, the water and all that stuff. That is a special kind of horse. So he has a black stripe right down the middle. Maybe you'll see it in another picture. So you can cut his hair all cool, like a castle and stuff. It's awesome. Oh, there's, so Brooklyn was on the horse before. This is our new baby cow, Rose. And there's all the kids. You see Arrow back there? He wanted to walk the cow. But do you see what he does not have on his feet? Is it safe for you to walk a cow when you have no shoes on? Is it safe for a little child that age to walk a cow even if he had shoes on? What happens if a cow steps on his foot? He's in trouble. So there's August and Arrow. Brooklyn's trying to hold him. We named her Rose because her mom, when she was pregnant, ate all the roses. So she grew the baby with roses, so we named her Rose. And her mom's name is Lily. So Lily and Rose, there's Brooklyn and Arrow on the horse. Arrow's a little bit nervous. You see the black stripe? Look at the black stripe in his hair. See that? So if you cut the white, you can cut the white in like hearts or in squares and then it looks like a really cool castle. It's awesome. Can you go to another one, Sam? That's it? All right, never mind. That's my whole family. Except for the dogs, I didn't show you the dogs. Are you okay with that? We, you want me to send you a picture of dogs? Sam, here, who wants dogs? Raise your hand. All right. My dogs are pretty sweet. Their names, let me see if I, I have a picture of Lauren with all the kids and all the dogs. Do any of you have three dogs or more? You guys do? So our dogs are from South Africa. They're called Boar Bulls. Can you say Boar Bull? Here, let me find you a good one. Hold on, sorry. Do you want me to just show you tomorrow? You want it tonight? Okay. You're not gonna be here tomorrow. Where are you gonna be? At your friends? All right. I'm gonna be here tomorrow. I don't know if I can. I might have to show you tomorrow. They're really big. I'll tell you about them. They're really big. And they're really strong. Oh, there's Arrow. Look at that face. This guy, all my children love gymnastics. They love to play on the rings. They love to play on the bars. We got Brooklyn bars for her birthday so she can just practice at home. Man, where is my picture of those dogs? I can't find it anywhere. Wait. Maybe it's coming. Oh, yeah, look. There's the boys. And Gus. Okay, I got a picture of the dogs. Sam, here it comes. I'm gonna send you two. These dogs are very strong. We actually have three. Two are from South Africa and one is from England. South African, there's South African mastiffs and English mastiffs. Man. If they want something, no amount of force on the leash will hold them. They are so strong. Do you any of you have big dogs, big, strong dogs? You do back there? What kind do you have? A mix? Oh, come on, that's cool. What kind's yours? Yeah? Yes. My boys have no tail. Yellow what? Yellow pickle, did someone say pickle? Pit bull! You have a yellow pit bull, that's amazing. Pit bulls are very strong, what kind do you have? Anatolian shepherd? Those are tough. Is that so if any animals come roaming around, it'll kill them, huh? My friend had some Anatolian shepherds. All right, Sam, did you get them? Oh, there they are. Okay, so this is Katie. That's Katie, she's the English mastiff, so she's bigger and weighs more, but these boys are stronger. This guy in the front, his name is Axel, and the other one in the back, his name is Earthquake. Is there one more of them? Oh, same picture, just a little bit, yeah, there it is. That way you can see their faces a little better. You see how strong those guys are? They're like, they look like they work out all the time, but they don't. Axel and Earthquake. You know why we named him Earthquake? 'Cause he kinda feels like one when he comes running through the house, even though he barely comes in. Okay, I'm gonna show you a few things really fast, just so you know, just so this is done. This is our book Lauren and I wrote called Win Win Parenting. Danny Silk wrote the foreword for it, he wrote Loving Our Kids on Purpose, he wrote Keep Your Love On, he wrote Culture of Honor. He is absolutely incredible, um, but he wrote the foreword, he said, "This isn't really a parenting book, it's a leadership book for parents." So, wow, that's a really good compliment, awesome. But it's really for young kids, obviously, we don't have teenagers, not specifically aimed toward teenagers, but has a lot of important stuff that can help in anywhere. Tonight, we're gonna talk about arrows a little bit, I love arrows. Obviously, I named my son Arrow, and I have three arrows right here to represent my kids. But we have this curriculum called Arrows Releasing Kingdom Children. It's all five-minute videos, some of the videos the kids can watch, but it's designed, I finally realized after 15 years of working with kids, that the home is the first church and the parents are the first pastors. And if what happens in here doesn't happen in home, it's not Christianity. 'Cause Christianity's not what we do, it's who we are. It's all the time, always on, can't turn it off. So this is all five-minute videos, because I also have three kids and I can't, I don't need hour-long videos, I need five-minute videos. There's 26 in there with a book, with a journal, for the kids. And this one is really fun, Bill Johnson wrote God is Good, and this one is called God is Really Good. So they asked me if I could, this is for the parents, they said, the publisher asked me and said, "Can you take Bill Johnson's book and put it into a 36-page kids' book?" And I thought, "You mean, can I take Bill Johnson's, one of his sentences and turn it into a 36-page kids' book?" 'Cause if you've read anything from Bill Johnson, you know, one sentence is like 40 books in one, and so... But God told me, "If you sign the contract, I'll, I'll give you the story." And I had a dream two nights later, and the whole story came to me in pieces after that, and then I wrote the book. Is there any little kids here that are like, oh, none of you are five or under? How old are you, my friend? Six, are you six? Can I give this to you? Do you like books? You do? That's God is Really Good, okay? All right, buddy. And I forgot to tell you, if you buy, we're doing a bundle, so if you buy these two together, you get that one for free. Sound good? And then, this is for the grownups mostly as well. Lauren and, Lauren and I just bought a whole bunch of these, we, there is an older book as well, this is the younger kids' book. I just read it to my five-year-old. I read the other one to my eight-year-old. So there's a junior version and then a, an older kid's version. This is probably one of the most important things we could teach our children right now. Good pictures, bad pictures, kids, if you don't know, on the phone, on the computer, on your iPad, on your tablet, there's gonna be good pictures and bad pictures, and it's really important that you know which is which. And parents, it's really important that we are the first ones to talk about this kinda stuff. If you guys don't know, um, there's something called the rule of first mention, the law of first mention. So let's say you guys, you have three kids over here, if you guys talk to your kids first about a subject, that's what they believe is true. If the school talks first, or the country talks first, or the TV talks first, or the internet talks first, that's what they believe is true. So then when we try to teach them something different than what they saw on TV, what we taught them fights against what they think is true. So it's important for us as parents to be the first ones to have these conversations about good pictures and bad pictures, and that book will help you, okay? All right, commercial done. Are you guys ready? Are you asleep or are you still awake? You're both, you're kinda half asleep, half awake? Okay, but you're the teenager, right? Kind of, 12, are you 12? Okay. So you guys really are half asleep, half awake. I wanna show you a verse in the Bible. Can we put that verse up, Sam? Don't worry, I won't talk forever, 'cause sometimes I get bored of listening to myself as well. Look at this verse, somebody read this, I want a kid to read this. I need a teenager, one of you 12-year-olds, come here, hurry up, get over here, I need to see you. All right, who's going first? You're gonna read the verse, you're gonna read where the address is. I'm gonna hold the mic, go. Tell us your name.
Timothy Danielson.
Timothy Danielson, what's your name?
Chesney Jobe.
What, Chesney? That's cool, Ches, you're cousins, okay, here we go, read that verse.
Like arrows in the hand of a warrior, so they are the children of one's youth.
So are the children of one's youth, see? You're 12, you gotta slow down a little bit, read, do it again.
Like arrows in the hand of a warrior, so are the children of the one's youth.
Where's this at in the Bible?
Psalms 127:4.
Psalm 127:4, I got a question for you. Who's the arrows? Man, you gotta read that verse, don't just read the words, pay attention, turn around, read it again. We're gonna listen to you all night till you figure this out.
Like arrows in the hand of a warrior, so are the children of one's youth.
So who's the arrows?
God.
No! That is not what the Bible, no! Listen, do you need to go sit down? All right, tell him.
It's us.
The kids, the children are like arrows in the hands of a warrior. Who's, who's, who's the warriors?
I don't know.
Man, you too. Is there a young kid that knows the answer? Who's the warriors? Which would be who? Your mom and dad. Like arrows, children are like arrows in the hands of a warrior. Come on, give these guys a little clap, a quick little clap. So, over here, we have a bow and arrow. I love bows and arrows. Oh my gosh, look at this. So kids, the Bible says, God says, "You are like arrows." So this is like you, right here. Oh my gosh, I would bring one of you up here to look at this, but that's actually really dangerous. This is like razor blades, there's four razor blades on there and a very sharp tip. This is a serious weapon. So what does that make you? A serious weapon. Now look, the world does not see you children the same way that God sees you. This is how God sees you. God says, "You are like this." Arrows, and your parents are like warriors. Does that make sense? Do you see that in the verse? "You are like arrows and your parents are like warriors." Now, look at this thing really close, this is a very, man, you got a good one. This is awesome. There's four parts to the arrow. What, does anybody know what this part's called right here? Arrow tip or arrow head. Do you know what this part's called right here? Little man, right there. The stick, yes, the shaft. Does anybody know what this is called? Fletching, yes. And then there's one more really important part I'm gonna get to in a little bit, but I want you to look at something here. You're like an arrow, your parents are like warriors. Now, most, most people do not know this. What I'm about to teach you, most people don't know. You are here to destroy the enemy and all of his works, all of his kingdom, all of his works. Your job on earth is to take out the devil. Let me, let me just be really clear about something, everybody look at me. Way too many Christians live very, very scared of the devil. Look, if you have one of these, or three of these, or if these guys, they have seven. They have seven arrows, they have seven children. I only have three, I have three arrows, they got seven. Do you think you really have to be afraid of the enemy if you know how to use one of these? No, but let me tell you, kids, most kids don't realize what they are, so they spend all their time playing video games, they spend all their time doing all this other stuff, they spend all their time watching TV shows, and they don't get to know who God has made them to be, and they spend a whole lot of their lives doing a whole bunch of stuff, not realizing they're here for a reason. And they, most kids just stay right here, stuck in the side of the bow, in that little quiver, or they get stuck right here in their parents' back like this, and they never actually come out and do what God designed them to do. But you're here to destroy the works of the devil, are you with me? Yes or no? Come on, you guys gotta talk back to me, so I know you're still here. Now, let me tell you something really interesting about this arrow right here. This arrow, somebody whoever owns this went to a store, went down a certain aisle and they found a pack. There was probably three of them in a little box, and it was probably $50 or something like that. And you can just pick them up, walk over, then the little, these tips are really nice, so these come separate. You pick the tips, you pick the arrows, and you walk over to the cash register and you set them down and you pay your money, and then you walk out with these really amazing arrows. But the Bible was not written in a time where we had stores like that. Guess who used to make the arrows? It wasn't some machine. Kids, I wanna ask you, who do you think used to make the arrows? Who? The warriors. The people who were gonna shoot the arrows were the ones who made the arrows. Now, they didn't make them, this is probably made, this is like metal, some kind of aluminum, or, yeah, it's a really nice lightweight metal. Maybe it's carbon fiber, I don't know, something. But back then, does anybody know what they made arrows from? Wood, where did they get the wood? Trees, like a branch, right? So the warriors would go up to a tree, they'd find a branch, they'd cut down the branch, and then they would start to shape it. That means they had to cut some stuff away, that means they had to sharpen some stuff. Or they would go to a friend and they'd say, "Oh, you know how to make metal really good, iron or stone. Can you make an arrowhead for me and I'll put it on and I'll trade you, I'll make you shafts, or I'll give you chickens and you give me an arrowhead." And they all used to work together to shape arrows. But the, the job of the warrior was to make sure they shaped that arrow so good that when they shot it, it would actually go where it was supposed to go. Now, I don't know about you, but when I was a little kid, my mom used to tell me not to do some things. Have your parents ever told you not to do some things? Have your parents ever told you you're not allowed to do certain things? Have you ever been a little bit frustrated at them when they told you you can't do certain things? Who's been grumpy at their parents before? I've been grumpy, especially when my mom would tell me, "No, you're not allowed to do that." But can I just tell you, the reason warriors would do that, the reason warriors would shape their arrows and take off stuff that wasn't supposed to be there, was so their arrows can fly straight. The reasons our parents tell us no, and they don't allow us to do certain things, the reasons our parents have certain rules and certain boundaries, and they won't let us go certain places, or they won't let us watch certain stuff on TV, or they won't let us play certain games, or they won't let us use certain words, is because they actually want you to do what God sent you to do. You know, your words are really powerful, and if you're using your words to hurt people or destroy people, you can't destroy the enemy. Hello? Look at me, guys. If you use your words in a way your parents don't want you to, or God doesn't want you to, it'll be really hard for you to do what you're born to do. There was a, a guy in the Bible named Samson, do any of you know Samson? Who knows Samson? Raise your hand, show me what you know about Samson. If you couldn't use words and you had to show me what Samson, what you remember about Samson, how would you do it? Go, stand up and show us. Let's see, stand up and show us. Oh, look at Samson, look at those muscles. Samson was the strongest man in the whole Bible, and his parents, you know what God told his parents? Do you guys know? Who knows? What did, what did God tell his parents? "Do not cut his hair." You know what else they told his parents? God told his parents? "You can never eat grapes." And he couldn't drink fruit, he couldn't eat fruit from the vine, he couldn't eat grapes, and he couldn't drink wine, which, you're a kid, so it doesn't matter. What, what would you do if you were like, "Mom, I'm going to school, can we pack my lunch? I want some grapes in my lunch." And your mom was like, "No, young lady, you are never allowed to have grapes in your entire life. God said you can't have grapes." How would you feel? Do you guys like grapes? Have you ever put grapes in the freezer and then you eat them when it's really hot? Frozen grapes? If you haven't tried it, you should try it, it's really amazing, frozen grapes are awesome. But wouldn't that be weird if you were Samson and you're like, "Mom, please, just let me have some grapes. All I want are grapes." No, you can't have grapes. That was Samson's mom and dad shaping him so he could do what he was supposed to do. "Mom, my hair is really long, can I please get a haircut?" No, you can never have a haircut. What if your mom told you, "No, you can never have a haircut in your entire life"? If you were 12, these 12-year-olds back here, their hair would be down to their feet. Their hair would already be down to their feet, it would be so long. What if your mom told you, "You can never, ever get a haircut"? Wouldn't that be so weird? Now, I wanna show you the last part of the bow, of the arrow, and what it does. You see this part right here? It's a little plastic piece with two little things sticking out. This is the part that connects, look, I'm gonna connect it right to the string. You hear it clicking? See this right here? That's called a knock. Everybody say, "Knock." Nice, kinda like knocking on the door, but doesn't have a K, for those of you who are in school. It doesn't have a K, so it's spelled different. The knock is where the arrow connects to the bow and to the warrior. So the warrior holds the bow like this in one hand, don't worry, I'm not gonna shoot anybody, just, I will not even come close. But this is where, this is where the warrior connects to the arrow, and this is where the arrow connects to the bow. Without the knock, the arrow cannot go anywhere. Do you see that? What, what would happen if that wasn't there? Would the arrow be able to fly? No, it would just, you'd pull back the string and the string would shoot and you'd probably, the arrow probably wouldn't go anywhere. You know why? It's not connected. Sometimes what happens with us is our parents are like, "You know what? I wanna shape you, young man, to be the most amazing arrow, razor-sharp, amazing fletching, perfectly straight. I want you to fly and destroy the devil's works, I want you to destroy..." And so your parents are like, "No, you can't watch that TV show. No, you can't talk like that. No, we're not gonna use our words that way." And we get really, really mad, and we think our parents are doing this stuff, and what happens is we start to disconnect from our parents. You wanna know how I know? 'Cause I was a little kid who disconnected from my parents. And I didn't start doing what I was supposed to do until I was like 28, no, 25. You don't have to wait till you're 25 to do what God put you here to do. But I'll tell you what, if you get upset with your parents, or you get hurt by your parents, or your parents tell you no, 'cause your parents are trying to shape you, they're trying to design you, if you get hurt and you disconnect, then they actually can't send you where God wants to send you. You actually can't do what God wants you to do. The most important part of an arrow is not the tip and it's not the shaft, those are very important, it's the place where it connects. The arrow and the warrior have to be connected, and that's what we're gonna talk a little bit about tonight. And then we're gonna be done, 'cause I'm not gonna keep you out too late, okay? Unless you kids want coffee, do any of you kids want coffee? Ah-ha, just joking, I tricked you, I totally tricked you, I am not gonna give you any coffee, that's for sure. But don't get mad at me, I asked Ryan if I could give you all coffee, and he's the one that said no. It's his fault. Just joking, just joking. He would never do that. He would totally give you coffee, probably. So at one point, every single person was disconnected from God as well, our Father. Everyone was disconnected from God. We didn't have the little thing in the string, and everyone was disconnected from God, and God wanted to do something to reconnect us. So He sent Jesus to be an arrow, to do exactly what God had sent Him to do. Hopefully that looks like a real cross. Kind of does. Not all the way, but pretty good. Somebody tell me, a kid, tell me, what did Jesus do on the cross? Here, I'm gonna bring the mic to you. Tell us all.
He died on the cross.
He died on the cross. Why did He die on the cross?
To save us from our sins.
To save us from our sins. Okay, so I'm gonna write some sins up here. I'm gonna write the word sins. Can somebody tell me, would everybody agree, "Jesus died for our sins"? Yeah? Who would agree with me? Who knows that? Okay, good. How many of you can tell me a sin, something that's, we've done that's a sin? You, shout it out. Oh, not listening. Okay, I'm gonna write that down. Not listening. What happens when you don't listen? Wait, don't tell me yet, actually, I'm gonna come back to that. Somebody else, you, my friend. Yeah, in the back. Yeah. Not listening to anybody, okay? So we got not listening up there. Somebody tell me a different one. Yes. Lying. I don't know about you, but I lied a lot of times. How many of you've lied before? How many of you've not listened before? Oh, okay, good. I'm not the only one. Somebody tell me another sin. Killing. Oh, good one. Man, that's a good one. You know what Jesus said about killing, though? This is really crazy. You know what Jesus said? He said, "You've heard that it was said, 'Do not kill.' But I tell you, if you get angry with your brother and call him a fool, you're in just as much trouble as if you killed him." How many of you've been angry and let anger tell you what to do? Okay, I'm gonna write that down too, cause I've never killed anybody, but I sure have been angry. How many of you been angry? Oh, good. Phew. Somebody else tell me another sin. You. Talking back. Oh, man, that's a good one. Or disrespect. Talking back, disrespecting. What else? Yeah. Oh, cussing. Is that what you call it here? Cursing, cussing. Some places call it cussing, some places call it cursing. All right, bad words. Man, that's good. Anybody else? Who's got another one? What? Praying to other idols. I'm just gonna write idols. You know some people, the TV is their idol? Did you know that? I know it sounds weird, but it is. Yes. Stealing. I was waiting for someone to say stealing. I was gonna have to say it if you guys didn't. Stealing. How many of you have ever stolen anything before? You can be honest, it's okay. All right, good. First time I got caught stealing, I was six years old. And my mom took me right back to the store and made me talk to a policeman. I almost peed my pants. I had to sit there with the policeman and he had the gun and the, he put the handcuffs right on the counter, on the desk, while he talked to me. And I was so scared of that. "I will never steal again." But I did. I did. The scary, the being scared did not help me. Yes, one more? You lost it, that's okay. You have one? Bullying. Yes, come on. That's a good one too. Bullying. All right, so now, here's what we're gonna do. So, everybody agrees in this room that Jesus died for our sins, our actions, the things that we've done wrong, or things that we haven't done right. Like, sometimes we see somebody and we know I'm supposed to help that person, and we don't do it. And Jesus, the Bible actually says, "If we know the right thing to do and we don't do it, it's a sin." So it's not just bad things we do, it's good things we don't do. Does that make sense? So Jesus died on the cross for all our sins, right? But let me ask you this. If you've, who's, who's told a lie before? Raise your hand high if you've told a lie. Parents too, raise your hands. Come on, this is not just kids, this is all of us. Good. At least you're honest. How do you feel when you've told a lie? Horrible. That's what I thought. Horrible. And then you have to really hide, huh? So you told a lie, then you feel horrible, then you try to hide, so you feel scared. How many of you felt scared after you told a lie before? All right. Scared. Somebody else. Let me see. If you said bad words, how do you feel? You feel weird. I know, feels weird, right? You know why it feels weird? Cause it's not what, it's not how you were designed to talk. That's why it feels weird. Somebody else. Parents, you can answer too. If you've ever said bad words, how do you feel? If you've said a bad word in front of your kids, how do you feel? Guilty. Oh, man, that's good. Guilty. Dirty. Someone say dirty? Disappointed. Oh, this is good. Come on, now we're getting parents involved here. Disappointed. Man, that's a lot of feelings. What happens if you stole? Yeah, you wanna say something? No. Did you have a feeling? Ashamed. Oh. How many of you have ever felt ashamed before? Man, I felt so much ashamed. Look at all these things. Okay, so now we have not only the actions that we did, yeah, you got one more? Beaten, like defeated? Defeated. I'm gonna write beaten and defeated. So Jesus died for our sins, but now we have all these feelings that come with them. Now let me ask you another question. What do you call people who do these things? So, for example, this is the easiest one. What do you call someone who tells a lie? Untrustworthy, or what else? A liar. All right, so untrust, that's a really good word. Untrustworthy liar. So look, 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 let me just show you something. So I tell a lie. Ah, shouldn't have done that. Not too good. And now I feel horrible, and I don't want anybody to find out, so now I really feel scared, and now I'm having thoughts, or someone called me an untrustworthy liar. Look at this. You see that? Okay, let's do another one. Bad words. If you say bad words, what's a name that would, that maybe someone would call you? Like, say you're in school and you say a bad word. What would kids call you? Stupid, potty mouth. Stupid. Potty mouth. That's really good. Hold on. This is really good. Excellent. Stupid. All right, so let's say, let's say this too. You, you messed up on a math test, so you didn't even do a sin. You didn't even sin. You just messed up on your test, cause you didn't study, or you just forgot the answers cause you felt a little bit nervous, and now you feel like you are stupid. Have any of you ever felt stupid before? Oh, good. I'm not the only one there too. All right, so look, let's do this. Where's the stealing? Here's stealing. What do you call somebody who steals? Thief. So I'm gonna write a thief down here. Let's see, talking back, disrespectful. What do you call somebody who kills? Murderer. There we go, murderer. Okay, what else? Let's see, let's see. All right, wait, look. Yeah. A criminal. Come on, that's a good, big word, criminal. Now look, all of these, all of these things that we've done are called... What do you call a person who sins? Oh, okay, just making sure. Just making sure you knew what you call a person who sins. Sinner. So let me show you something really crazy from the Bible. Can you put up, I don't know if you can see it with my whiteboard here, probably you can't, the Romans eight, one verse? Oh, there we go. Here's what it says. "There is therefore now no condemnation to those who are in Christ Jesus, who, who do not walk according to..." Is that, is that right? "Who do not walk according to the Spirit." Who walk accord, I think you're supposed to say, "Who walk according to the Spirit." Copy and paste, the Bible app is off. Something's wrong with the Bible app. We're just gonna look at the first part. "There is therefore now no condemnation to those who are in Christ Jesus." Can you say the word condemnation for me?
Condemnation.
All right, everybody try it. Say condemnation. That is a big word. I'm gonna tell you what it means. Here's what it means. Condemnation takes what you did and gives you a name. It calls you a name. This is the devil's ultimate trick in the whole world, is to say, "You lied, liar. Oh, you lost."
Loser.
Oh, you stole something.
Thief.
And it makes you feel horrible. Now look, the crazy part about, about Jesus is that the Bible says, "God shows us how much He loves us, that when we were still sinners, Christ died for us." So Jesus didn't just die for sins, He died because we were sinners. And once we're in Christ, there's no more names. So Jesus didn't just die for what we did, He died for who we were. He died to change us into someone completely different. So when I was a little boy, I told a lot of lies and I stole a lot of stuff. I stole a lot of things. I did really bad things. I would tell you some of the bad things I did, but they're so bad, I don't wanna tell you. They're, they're stupid, stupid bad. I did so many bad things and I had so many names. I was a liar, I was a thief, I was a jerk, I was a bully, I was afraid, I was all those names. I was all of those names. But what God does in Jesus is He takes away all the names. Here's what's so wild to me. If we believe that we are an untrustworthy liar, you see that? Like, say you tell a lie and someone says, "You're untrustworthy. You are an untrustworthy liar." Maybe it's a teacher. "You're an untrustworthy liar." Or maybe it's just in your head. You're an untrustworthy liar. If you believe that, is it hard for you to stop lying? It will be. Whatever we believe is how we live. So if you believe you're a liar, it's hard to stop lying. Look at me, you gotta look at me close. If you believe you're a thief, it's hard to stop stealing. Why? You believe it's who you are. Hello? Have you ever seen a butterfly? What was a butterfly before it climbed up on the tree? A caterpillar. So you have a little caterpillar that climbs up on a tree and gets inside a what? A cocoon, or a chrysalis. I think chrysalis is butterflies, right? Cocoon is for moths. Is that right? You kids in school, science class, you know. So you have the little chrysalis, caterpillar inside. Inside he changes and he comes out, he's completely different. Is that right? He's never the same again. Can he act like a caterpillar again? Can he try? Could he go land on the ground and try to walk around? Could the butterfly fly down, land on the ground and try to walk around? He could try. Would he be very good at it? So what happens after you realize that there's therefore now no names, no condemnation for what you've done? There's no names when you're in Christ Jesus. There is no liar when you're in Christ Jesus. There is no thief when you're in Christ Jesus. You could try to lie again, but you won't be very good at it. Cause you know it's not who you are. Are you here? Most kids and most families don't know this. Can I tell you something? I've been all over the world working with children. I've been all over the planet, and everywhere I go, there's, there's families who realize, "Oh no. Oh no, I didn't realize that Jesus took those names." And there's kids who realize, who'd never realized before, "Oh, I don't have to believe I'm a sinner anymore. I don't have to believe I'm a liar anymore." Not because I didn't lie, or I didn't sin, I did. But because of what He did. I'm not a, I'm not... If it, if I got names for what I did, I would be a liar and a sinner and a thief. But God doesn't call us names according to what we've done. He calls us names according to what Jesus has done. He'll never call you a name according to what you did wrong. He only calls you a name according to what Jesus did right. So when He looks at you, even if you've lied, even if you've stolen, even if you've disrespected your parents a hundred times, He'll say, "Hey, you're my kid. You're too good to do that. You are a person of truth. You don't need to lie. You're a good kid." One of the worst names most kids believe is they're a bad kid. I have a kid, I have a kid I work with. He said, every time his parents try to talk to him, he says, "I'm bad, I'm bad, I'm bad. No, I'm bad." No, you're, you are not. But if you believe you are, you keep acting like you're bad. If you believe Jesus died and take away all those names, Jesus is like, he doesn't even care. He's like, "You know what? He just like, his blood, it's like his blood just wipes him all away. He's like, there, there, oh, here. Oh, gone." That's how fast Jesus does it, like this, boom. Once we know what Jesus has done, not only do we not have to do those sins anymore, you don't have to lie anymore, cause it's not who you are. You're not a liar, you don't have to steal anymore, you don't have to sin anymore, cause it's not who you are. You're not a sinner. But here's what else. You don't have to feel all those feelings anymore. You don't have to feel guilty, you don't have to feel horrible, you don't have to get mad at yourself, you don't have to feel all sad and ashamed, you don't have to feel ashamed anymore. You know why? You never have to hide from Him. He's not gonna call you anything bad. He's not gonna come after you and punish you. Why would He punish you when Jesus gave His life for you? Why would God be angry and punish you when Jesus took everything He took on the cross for us? Wouldn't that be weird if, if God was like, "Hey, this guy over here, he got in a lot of trouble for you. Now I'm gonna make you in trouble too." That would be weird. Someone already paid. Here's what I want you to do. I want you to take your papers and with your pencils. I told you, this is the most important part of the arrow right here. This right here is the most important part of the arrow. It's called the knock. This is what makes sure we are connected to the warrior and connected to the bow. This right here is what makes sure everything else gets to do what it's supposed to do. Without this, we will not do what we were supposed to do. Without a strong connection to your parents and to your family, kids, you will not get to do what you were sent here to do. Let me tell you something close. Parents, without this, without really strong connection to our kids, they can't do what they're born to do. We'll shoot them way over there instead of over there. Are you with me? Here's what happens. A lot of times, sometimes as parents, we don't realize that we have accidentally or on purpose called our children's na, called our children names because of what they've done. Or we've allowed them to think that's who they are. Sometimes my son gets in trouble and he sits in this chair called the no fun chair, and he sits there and I can see he starts to feel ashamed. I can see he starts to feel scared. I can see he starts to feel bad about himself. He starts to think, "I'm a bad boy. Oh no, I'm a bad boy." And you know what I do? I walk right up to him and I say, "Buddy, what you did was bad, but you are not bad." I look him right in the eyes and I tell him, "You're not bad. You're a good kid. You don't have to do that anymore. And you don't have to feel all these bad feelings for what you've done. You may sit in the chair, cause you're in trouble. But in my heart, I still love you. You're still my kid. You're still a fun kid. You're still a good kid." Parents, these are the ways that we make sure our kids have the knock, so they can stay connected to us. If we let our kids get disconnected from us, if we let our kids get separated from us because of this kind of, if we create any kind of atmosphere in our homes that is, that has names or feelings that have been taken away in Jesus, then we are actually breaking the connection and it's really hard to shoot our kids where they're supposed to go. Are you with me? Here's what I want you to do. In your little families, can we get somebody maybe play the keyboard? Yes, there you are. I want you to take your paper. I got you all papers and pens. And I want you to talk about things that you've done wrong. Or things you haven't done right. I want kids, you to be totally honest. You have no reason to hide. You have no reason to shame, to be ashamed. No one's mad at you. No one's angry at you. We're all discovering what Jesus did again. We're just, we're not, you're not gonna be in trouble. You can be totally honest about anything that happened. But I don't want you to just write down the things that you've done or you haven't done. I want you to write down the feelings that you felt. Does that make sense? I'm gonna give you like five minutes, maybe not quite five, maybe like four. I'm gonna give you four minutes in your families to write down the feelings, write down the actions, and then write down the names. Mom, when this happened, I felt really horrible. Write that down. Mom, when this happened, I felt like, I felt like I was just really stupid. Write that down. Parents, I want, you can write it down too. I was at work the other day and I got in a meeting and I got really mad at that guy on the other side and I yelled at him. I did something that I didn't wanna do. And I've been feeling horrible ever since. And I'm afraid to talk to him. I'm afraid to be at my job. If that's something like that, tell your kids, write it down. This is how we build a connection so strong, we become the warriors and the arrows we're supposed to be. I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes. Sometimes as families, we get so busy and we're like, hurry up, put your backpack on. Let's go to school. Hurry up, let's make your lunch. Come on, get your shoes on, your jacket. Oh wow, the weather's really cold. Get your coat. Oh snowy, get your boots. If we're not careful, we only end up talking about the weather and we only talk about what things we have to do and we don't actually talk about what's going on in our hearts. If we're not careful, that's the stuff that makes us so we don't have a knock. That's the stuff that makes us so we're not as connected as we could be. The next two days, we're gonna learn how to release our arrows and shoot our arrows. So we gotta have the knock really connected. Cause otherwise that string just bounces back and forth and the arrow goes nowhere. If you guys are all done, I want you to look at me again for just a minute. We're gonna do something. There's a lot of people. They... See if I have my... No, I left it. There's a lot of people that they take all these names and they have all these things written down. And it's like they're stuck all over them. They have, it's like, have you ever gone to a store and you see somebody with the name tag? Where you've been at like a potluck dinner or something? And everybody has a name tag that says, "Hello, my name is Seth. Hello, my name is John. Hello." And everyone writes their little names on. There's people who, who, once they've realized all the stuff they've done wrong, they walk around and it's like they have 50 name tags on. Sinner, liar, thief, jerk, bully, punk, stupid, dumb, mean, grumpy, angry, afraid. And they have all these name tags on. And they try to carry them around their whole life. Or they try to take them off their whole life. They spend their whole lives trying to pretend like these names aren't stuck to them. Trying to stop sinning when it's too late. They believe they already are a sinner and they can't do anything about it. They believe they're a liar. So they have trouble taking all these name tags off. And they try to carry them around their whole life instead of bring them to the cross and give them to Jesus. Jesus died for every single person in the earth. Jesus died for every single person to no longer be a sinner anymore, to be a son and a daughter of God. He died for every person to never feel ashamed, to never feel afraid, to never feel stupid, to never feel horrible. He died for none of us. We don't have to carry any of those feelings. You guys wrote down feelings on your papers? Are you guys here? Is it too late? Hello, are you guys here? You don't have to, we're not gonna feel bad. We're gonna, we're gonna leave all this stuff here. Here's what I want you to do. I want you to decide. Am I gonna keep all this stuff? Or am I gonna give it to Him? Am I gonna keep all these names? Am I gonna keep all these feelings? I don't wanna keep those things. If I kept all the feelings from all the bad things I did, I would be not in a good spot. I wouldn't be able to look you in the eyes. I wouldn't even be able to be here right now. If you wanna keep those feelings, the choice is yours. If you wanna keep those names, the choice is yours. You don't have to. Here's what we'll do. When I say go, if you want, I want you to come right up here and I want you to put all your papers down here. And I want you to leave all those things here. And then I want you to go back to your seat and I want you to stand and we're gonna sing a song to Jesus and I'm gonna pray for us. This night is gonna set us up for the next two nights. But this is where you as a family, make sure you're connected. This is where you as a family, make sure you have the pieces in place that you're connected, so you can fly where you're supposed to. If you wanna bring all those things up here and leave them at the cross and leave them with Jesus and you don't wanna carry them around anymore, you don't want them holding on to you anymore, sticking on to you, then I want you to go right now. Come on up here, kids and parents together. Come on up here and just leave them all right there. You can fold them up or you can just put them there. No one's gonna know who they are. Actually, you know what? Let's not all go back to our seats. Let's stay up here. Let's, let's stay up here. I want you to put all your stuff down and then stay right up here. Turn around. We're just gonna take a few minutes. And we're gonna worship Jesus for what He's done. Do you wanna know the secret, the secret weapon that you are? Like I told you, you're the weapon. Jesus said about children, He said, "Whenever children praise God, they shut the devil's mouth." Have you ever played that game where you zip the devil's mouth? Or you zip, zip and take the key and throw it away? Have you ever played that? Like zip, now you can't talk, I have your key. Or is it? Have you played that? You know what I'm talking about? Every time you sing to Jesus because of this and you're like, "Wow, Jesus, thank you. Jesus, thank you, I'm not a sinner now. Thank you, I'm not a liar." That's what you did, not what I did. Thank you, Jesus. Oh wow, Jesus, you loved me so much that you died when I was a sinner. Oh, thank you. Whenever you do that, whenever you say that, whenever you sing those words to Jesus, you know what it does to the devil? It shuts his mouth. It's like you're taking, it's like you're being shot right in the devil's face. I won't do that, that's bad. And I'm gonna move that, so nobody accidentally kicks it or bumps it or something, cause that would really hurt. We're gonna worship Jesus, cause you're a dangerous weapon to the enemy and you're a dangerous weapon for God and for your parents. You are here to change the world. You are here to, to, to make the world look like heaven. And when you realize how much Jesus changed you, that's how you can change the world. You ready? We're gonna, we're gonna sing. I want you to lift your hands and I want you to sing to Jesus. Who the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. In my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. Sing that out again, hear the Son. Whom the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. In my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. I'm chosen. I am chosen, not forsaken. Oh, I am who you say I am. You are for me, not against me. Oh, I am who you say I am. I'm chosen, I am chosen, not forsaken. Oh, I am who you say I am. You are for me, not against me. Oh, I am who you say I am. Oh, I am who you say I am. Hear the Son. Who the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Oh, yes, I am. In my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God. Oh, yes, I am. Who the Son sets... Sing it out. Oh, is free indeed. Come on. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. Hear the Son. Whom the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. Parents, if you can, come around back of your kids and put your hands, just lay your hands on your kids' shoulders. I know some of you got a lot of kids and maybe can't do that. But come, come be with your kids while we sing this one more time through. Or kids, go to your parents. Let's just worship Jesus as a, as a family. We're gonna sing it through one more time and we're gonna pray all together. You ready? Child of God. I'm chosen. I am chosen, not forsaken. I am who you say I am. You are for me, not against me. I am who you say I am. I am chosen, not forsaken. Oh, I am who you say I am. You are. You are for me, not against me. Oh, I am who you say I am. Oh, I am who you say I am. Who the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Oh, yes, I am. In my Father's house. There's a place for me. I'm a child of God. Oh, yes, I am. Who the Son sets free. Oh, is free indeed. I'm a child of God. Yes, I am. Just put your hands on your heart. Say, "Jesus." "All those names." "All those feelings." "And all those things I've done." "All the things I'll ever do." "I give them to you." "I'm not any of those names anymore." "I am who you say I am." "I'm your child." "I'm not a sinner." "I'm not a liar." "I'm not a thief." "I'm your child." "Jesus, thank you." Just say, "Jesus, thank you." "From now on, I'm gonna live as a child of God." Yeah, you can. "I'm not gonna take any of those names back." "Cause I already gave them to you." "Help us." "As a family." "Stay connected." "To who you say we are." "To what you've done for us." "So we can be the arrows." "And the warriors." "That destroy what the enemy's trying to do." "That we can do what you sent us here for." "To change the world." "Cause you changed us." "Thanks, Jesus." "In your name we pray." "Amen." Good job, guys. Good job sitting there for an hour, listening to me talk. And it's not too late, so hopefully it's not past your bedtime. Even though it's Friday night. But I'll see you again tomorrow, okay? Pastor Ryan, do you wanna say anything?
You guys received something from heaven tonight? God is good. Praise God. Well, go ahead and go back to your seats. At this time, we like to receive an offering before we depart tonight for Seth and his ministry. So if you're... Bible says, "Those that have given us spiritual things," that it's right for us, for them to receive of our carnal things or our finances. And so if you're writing a check tonight, you can write it to Destiny Church. if you're writing a check tonight, you can write it to Destiny Church. If you're giving cash and would like a receipt for your offering, go ahead and just slip your hand up and an usher will give you an offering envelope. Is that fun to have the kids with us in the service here? Is that cool? Received some family ministry and we've set it up for these services for all of our children's workers to be in the meetings. We have people from outside of the church that have, are really doing an awesome job helping us with the children, the preschool agent under, so we're really grateful for that. When you go to pick up your kids, thank them. We're so grateful that they're helping us out so our children's people can receive in these meetings. Isn't that awesome? So if you're ready to, for the offering, go ahead. Let's, let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to sow in your kingdom. In Jesus' name, we thank you, God, that you will provide bountifully, God, in Jesus' name and in Seth's ministry. We just declare, God, those things that have been sown into our church family and into the people that are represented here. God, I think that those seeds will multiply in Jesus' name and bring forth fruit, God, that will remain and bring a bountiful harvest in Jesus' name. We thank you for that tonight. In Jesus' name, everybody said, amen. Go ahead and receive the offering, ushers. Remember tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, we're gonna be here, all the kids, everyone in the auditorium, 500 will be taken care of in the Superchargers and Little Sparks classrooms. So thank you so much for coming and hope to see you in the morning.